Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the Marion Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, June twenty-sixth to order. Time is now seven P M. First item, as always, is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I want everyone to please rise. The Pledge of Allegiance. Of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. In which it is. The liberty and justice for all. As a reminder, the meetings are recorded for audio and video. We ask that you please silence or put your cell phones on vibrate so you don't disturb the flow of the meeting. Anyone wishing to address the board during public comment, we ask that you clearly state your name and address for the record. And be sure that you sign in on the the sign in sheet as well. Administrative item, we have to note that there was an executive session held after the May Board of Supervisors meeting from nine thirty-five to nine forty-seven to discuss a matter that involved potential litigation. We do have a number of minutes that Lisa was able to finish up. The first one is January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, the Board of Supervisors meeting. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Peter, second by Jesse, real call Peter.
Hi.
Irene.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Okay, next one is the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-five workshop meetings minutes. I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, second. Motion made by Peter, second by Jesse, real call Peter.
Hi.
Irene. Hi.
Gonna give me a second.
Sorry.
Uh, and then finally, the approval of the minutes for March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, special meeting about the historic district. I'll make a motion to approve that as well.
Oh, second. Okay, motion made by Peter, second by.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Irene.
Hi.
Going out of work.
Yeah, I know. It's impossible.
Uh, okay, so we're uh, we're gonna do the the reports all in one group of things. Irene, do you have a Treasury report or?
Yes, we had um, a recent pension audit that went down. We're coming up for our main audit this upcoming Monday. I have to apologize about not getting out the financials. So to everyone this week, I just got back from short vacation, so I'll have it for next next meeting. Um, nothing unusual. I mean, everything's kind of status quo, so.
Good, excellent. Um, I'll run through the other reports and then we'll let the uh, fire company do their report. Uh, ambulance, we had uh, ten calls for Marion Township. For uh, this isn't just Western Berks technically. Um, during the month of April, they have not supplied May's numbers yet. Um, police.
We wanted to reach out to Myers Town and Newmanstown so if they could supply something.
I mean, if they if they can give us.
Yeah, let's do that. And then this is more numbers that we know that we have available.
Uh, police was pretty quiet. They had seven EMS and fire, five traffic stops, six citations issued. And patrolled a total of one thousand eighty-three miles. Of course, the month. And then the sanitary sewer engineers report. There were sixteen pumping reports submitted during May, bringing the total count up to one hundred and thirty-one properties that have submitted pumping reports since the February twenty twenty-four startup. Um, our next step is to send out pump notice letters. Kimberly is actively working on generating those and getting those sent out. Um, and then also scheduling a sewer management program education. So one hour session, we should do this sometime in August or September. Uh, which is actually part of the.
Did you do that?
No, I did not do that yet. Um, which is part of the P A D E P's mandated uh, program that they have around sewer management. Um, just as a kind of quick update for everybody, uh, there are two grants that we have open right now. Uh, one of them, uh, we received on uh, we actually accepted it on April fifth, twenty twenty-four. This was a sixty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars that we got around uh, the design portion of the Act five thirty-seven. Uh, Hydro Terra has completed uh, some of the draft specifications and are waiting for uh, E one manufacturer um, to supply comments, and then we can forward that off to the Wolfster Sewer Authority. Um, and then the other one, um, actually, we have three, I apologize. Um, the other one is the emergency management trailer. Uh, John actually has that here tonight, so anybody that would like to see it after the meeting will do a quick kind of show and tell on it. Uh, we had gotten that on a grant of fifty-six thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars to help build our emergency management program. And then the other one is the uh, Topahackin Police, um, thirty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. Um, I know we had worked on getting some stuff ordered. There was still some stuff with the radios happening.
Yeah, we have some with Colin, that's all.
Yeah, and then whenever we turn that in, we'll get that reimbursement as well. Steve, if you'd like to take the floor from here, that's what I've got in terms of the professional service updates.
Thank you for the fair department for the month of May. Had a total of nine incidents. So it was in Marion Township, we had one structured fire, one accident, one controlled burn, two automatic fire alarms, and one tree down, and we also assisted on three mutual aid strike. But that's about all. I have the report. I know Lisa had talked to you a while ago about the meeting minutes.
Yeah, um, we're working on them every day.
Get those out. Um, I think I just started now when you had mentioned that the police and radios. What about fire police radios? Would there be any possibility, maybe the next time you send in for a grant, we could, because these radios.
Yeah, I was actually.
Requires our.
Yeah.
I was talking.
Seemingly expensive.
Yeah, I was talking to John right before the meeting, so hundred percent think that's a great fit for an L S A grant submission, and we can get that in, I think that's March of next year. Um, we can get everything prepped and ready to go and have it for day one of when when it opens. Um, the other thing that we need to be cautious of is from what John had heard, they're probably gonna be changing the radio system.
Significant upgrades or.
Yeah, so it it might be in the our best interest.
To what's gonna happen.
To wait a second, because they're they're not cheap. They're like seven thousand dollars for a radio. Yeah.
It'd be awesome if they'd upgrade it and allow us to use Kenwood. Those are like thirty-four hundred.
Yeah. Um, but we might.
At this point. Yeah, they're around eight.
Yeah, we might wanna, we might wanna hold.
Yeah.
If we can and and then buy a bunch.
Put that word in there.
Yeah.
Be something like that.
All for it. Um, did you guys see your your badges and stuff?
Yes.
Perfect. Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, um. I guess the only other one that would still be is EMC. John, do you wanna do the EMC report upfront here?
Hold it up front.
I mean, I upfront of the meeting, you can, you can do it from wherever.
No, no, because because the.
Oh, yeah.
You have to come. Yeah.
They're gonna make you do it, John.
Yeah, it's the recording. What you're wanting.
Yes, ma'am. What, do I just have for the uh, A C unit listed?
Mm-hmm.
If we can. Um, I tried to use personal A C units in the trailer. They're too old, they're not cutting it, and they're only six to eight thousand B T U. The one that I'm requesting, fourteen thousand B T U, the generator will power it. Um, we've had a couple of guys from the E M A Task Force messing as far as how we're setting the trailer up, and I'd I'd love to show people afterwards. And this, trust me, this is still a work in progress. The other, I just looked up also as far as the radios for fire police. There's another grant for Norfolk Southern, because we still are close enough to the railroad tracks. I'm gonna see, because it's for public safety and community development, up to fifty thousand. I'm gonna see if we can apply for that for radios.
Okay.
That's gonna be the big.
Yeah, I mean, any any mechanism that we can do.
I just know as soon as we get them, they're gonna change.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna hit up a couple of other people to see, because you had the there's the Kenwood, there's like two or three other brands also, I'm done. The Motorola, but um, so the trailer, for the most part, is, I'm gonna say ninety percent in service. Um, it's just a matter of still building. I got some more shelves and stuff like that to put in it. All the equipment, for the most part, is mounted in it. Still continuing some more mounting. Um, the uh, I think other than I'm working on, what's called the N O R M, the notification and response manual. So that's where all the communications, everybody sells stuff like that, fire, police, EMS, everything, uh, road crew into one big manual. So each of the supervisors, you'll each get one. There'll be one here at the office, the fire chief. I think I have three assigned for the fire department for the uh, you have one assistant, one deputy? Our chief's chief assistant deputy, two assistants, okay, so I'll need a fourth one, no big deal. Um, but that should be ready maybe two to three months.
Okay.
Um, that when the draft is done, I'll get it to you guys. I will assume they'll have to review it. Um, but uh, and that's really about it right now.
Okay, so quick question, because I know immediately sprung to mind with the air conditioner.
Yes.
With that being a trailer, could we get like a roof unit like you put on an R V rather than a like just a wheel around thing?
What I thought also on the units, the portable units, that if we needed to, whether it's here, we needed it, if it was at the, if we get back to the other building, it's still, we can put it in there if we needed it. It's also a heater. So that's why I'm not, I'm not gonna ask for a heater for it also, but I had them when they built the trailer, built the twelve by twelve opening into the wall for the A C unit, because I try to avoid, and a lot of the trailer companies that don't add anything to your roof, if you can help, like a travel trailer.
Yeah.
They're built around that.
Yeah.
But aftermarket, if we do anything in the roof, we avoid the warranty. So, because that's where I said, no, I want it in the side, because I I don't ever want to have a leak from the roof in this thing, and that will be the first place. If you guys tell me otherwise, we'll go that route.
I was just curious.
But uh, some of the ones we, something that I had spoken to up at, was it Camping World up by Cabela's? Um, most of those units and stuff like that, and install the unit and stuff like that, still gonna be five to five hundred to a thousand bucks. So trying to do something portable and.
Yeah.
Uh, that if we did need it, you know, interior somewhere as an incident, it's again, just that mobility.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, sensible explanation. Um, then the other thing, just remember, you you had asked about uh, additional chains for the the chainsaws.
Yes, sorry.
You can give us a price, rough price point on that? We can.
I could look it up, but I was probably just like gonna run down the ebblings tomorrow to get the chains for Saturday.
Okay.
Um, I usually honestly, I buy my chains on eBay.
Honestly, that's that's I even call that a consumable item for like road crew even, so just work with, work with Carl.
Yes, he's definitely concerned.
Yeah, that and then uh, honestly, like one or two chains for the pole saws, that's about it.
Yeah, so work, work, work with Carl, that works.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're off tomorrow.
Um, okay.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a concern about the.
Yeah, let's talk.
So that air conditioner, I don't know how that's gonna hold up to constant being toted around in the back of the trailer. Because they're not really meant for that. They're meant for a residential application.
Well, just when I, when I've been, because I've gone to the scales a couple of times. Um, I've taken it down to Home Depot when I picked up lumber and stuff like that, and I have the thing Velcro strapped into the wall. It's mounted in there. Um, so I mean, the computer screens, everything else like that that's been in there.
Right.
I get it.
I've had a few of these in my house, and they're they're plastic. They're not made very well.
Yeah.
Your best option for a trailer like that would be a roof unit. And usually, if the person that you purchased the tractor from, the dealer, they put it on, it would be warranted.
All right, I'll call all of them. It has, it has to go back down on M G S because one of the switches is bad.
Yeah.
Being on vacation, I haven't been able to get down there together.
Yeah, my.
Trying to help me with that.
I agree with you that if we can put it on the roof, that makes sense, but but I also don't want to avoid the warranty.
Right, right, so you have to.
No, I'll ask him tomorrow.
Yeah, so we gotta make sure that we're good doing it smart.
Because I can't, I camp in my enclosed trailer, because I used to do the trail rides, and I never really had an issue. I just leave the doors open. And fans going.
Right, but it's ninety-three degrees out.
Right, it's not, well, it's a heat wave too.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but also it's used as an emergency operations center, basically. It's our portable E O P right now.
Yeah.
Producing people.
Yeah.
Four or five computers, all the monitors and stuff, and then all the chargers and everything.
Yeah.
Even when it was only, it was eighty-four degrees outside, it was ninety-eight inside it, and the coolest I can make it was ninety-two at that point.
I don't object to the premise. I think we just wanna.
Yeah, yeah, figure out the best. Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, you're good. You're good. Thank you. Okay, uh, next is to approve the payment of bills for June twenty twenty-five. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Peter, second by Irene, real call Peter.
Hi.
Irene. Hi.
Hi.
I have them right here. Yeah. You guys could wait.
Okay, uh, this time I'll open up the floor for public comment.
I'll leave.
Yeah, John, just step outside.
No, no, Al, I'll leave. Oh, here.
Al, I'll go here.
Oh, my God.
My name is Oliver Fernino, fifth five Main Street, Stasburg. Let's start with this letter here first. About the grass. We so worry about getting the grass cut and clean up, but we don't worry about the hazard that the trees are. Oh, my, or next door neighbor can create death.
Two completely different things, Al.
It's the same thing. It's a hazard.
The top grass really isn't a hazard, it's a maintenance thing. The tree thing, whether I agree or disagree with you, the the attorney has explained that this is more of a civil matter. Did you talk to an attorney?
I talked to him and said the board can make any.
Within reason, yeah, there's certain things that we, I mean, we can do just about anything, whether it's legally gonna hold water is a completely different matter, Al.
I know, if you if you're making them, if you make it legal, if you make it, let's say, okay, let's let's get these trees topped off. I don't, I don't want them to, trees to be cut down the bottom.
Yeah.
I just want to cut off the top, so it's it's not a hazard for anybody who walking down the street.
Again, whether I agree or disagree with you, Al, I'm gonna, I'm gonna trust in the attorney on this one, on the fact that this is more of a civil matter between you and property owner to property owner. Otherwise, we're getting into the area of, in my personal opinion, uh, not anything to disparage homeowners associations, but we're getting a little homeowners association, if we're like, you can only have trees of a certain height, you can only do this, you can only do that. Um, it it's a fine line.
It's a fine line, but those trees are so freaking high, it'll take two homes away. Or take mine, the next one neighbor, and maybe Tim, the next guy down below.
Let me, let me rephrase this. When you talk to your attorney, rather than asking him if we can do something as a board, ask him what the actual litigation options are for this.
He he told me, he said, I could write a letter one to, they're handed to him, and one certified letter about the trees. But the board here, it can make a complaint on that trees to be topped off. They said they can do anything they wanna do, if they wanna do it.
So. Within reason.
Well, that is a big reason.
Yeah. So. The only thing I can say is.
Let's say my grandkids come down there and play in the yard, and this freaking tree decides to fall over and killing one or two of my kids, my grandkids.
So.
What what do I have to do? Get my gun and go out shoot somebody?
That would definitely be illegal, Al.
Huh?
That would definitely be illegal.
It'd be illegal, but be a big satisfaction to get it done.
Maybe to shoot the trees?
Have to shoot the person on the trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so.
I mean, it's not gonna come to that, but what I'm saying is, is something's gotta be done.
Yeah, I I.
I'm sure you're gonna find something.
We don't, we don't have the right. We don't.
I'm getting two, two things here. One, one says no, and one says, yeah, you can do it.
So, again. We can do it, but it probably wouldn't be legal.
Look, I already already said this a couple of years ago, but generally, the township has the right to regulate trees to the extent that in our right of way. I we also have the right to to regulate through property maintenance code, the height of grass. But trees are different, because trees affect the inherent value of a property. So to the extent we say, you know, Mr. Property Owner, you have to cut your trees down, well, arguably, that might be taken, that requires compensation, because again, trees are part of the property's value. And so unless unless the growth of a tree impacts right of way, we prob, we probably don't have the ability to regulate it. It is a civil matter in nature.
Well, we gotta do something. Send a guy a letter, some kind of say, look, you gotta, because it's not a safe.
But it's not, but it, but if we, if if we don't have the jurisdiction to regulate tree height, it's not in our power just to send that type of letter.
We said, you got the power to send for freaking grass.
That's true.
That's, that's different. That's, that's actually supported by statute.
And then, and then send all these registered letters out that cost money.
And that's, that's part of a a completely different thing.
Yeah, but the thing is, it's getting done, right? It's getting done, there's something done by the trees. Somehow, you gotta find something, because I am gonna find something.
They have your attorney to write a letter.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what you can do. You can ask them to send a letter.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think I already, I think I already said this, okay, but your, your best option is to put that property owners, homeowners insurance or property owners insurance carrier on notice. Because the carrier then may exercise its leverage to have that person cut down the tree, because it's a liability for the insurance carrier. I think I said that a couple of years ago, but that that is your best leverage. Have your attorney send a letter to the.
Letter to the.
Property owner, and if you can find out the property owners insurance company, send a letter to that company as well.
Yeah, because I I gotta do something, because they said one day I wanted to sell the house. They come over here, look at them trees, and said, I ain't buying this place here. It's a trap. And the house ain't worth nothing.
I know, but these, these, so this type of issues as common as you expect, right? Some property owners are more vigilant about maintaining their properties than others, and it does cause risks between neighbors.
I don't, I don't get a ship that never talk to me. I'm eighty-four years old. The thing I worry about when my neighbor is not talking to me.
That's not, that's not the point Colin is trying to make.
The point, the, the point, the point, the point is, not all property owners are responsible. And you as a neighbor have to have to deal with it, or you have to seek your option, if it's considered an option, and I'm telling you, one of the options is probably to try and put your neighbor's carrier on notice. I I don't know what else to tell you. It's not, it's not a township issue. If that tree was hanging over the right of way, we may have some power to do something and help you out. But that's not the case.
Well. I'd talk about next month, I'm gonna check on the insurance.
Okay.
Definitely do.
Insurance company?
Yeah.
My insurance.
Your neighbors and friends.
But he's gonna, he's gonna get a letter to him.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine. You can certainly do that. Nothing says you.
This way, if one of those trees break and fall down and make damage, if it kills somebody, I don't wanna be responsible for that.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be responsible. It's his, it's that, your neighbor, it's your neighbor's property. You're responsible for the.
Yes.
I know today is so crooked, they'll turn around and prove something, are you?
There's, there's laws and hilariously, I actually looked this up from something that I saw on the internet. There's special laws around trees, because they are considered something that adds value to a property. Um, special contingencies around damages and things like that, if somebody were to like, I I wanna see through the back alley, but I can't because of Al's trees. So they, you know, cut the top off of your trees or something like that. There's beyond just regular property damage, there's certain rules around tree-related things, so. It's something, to Colin's point, that we as a board, as a township, can't regulate effectively. But you, between uh, one property owner and another, can do things to try to to achieve that end. And the insurance company is probably your best bet on leverage, because they're gonna look at it and they're gonna theoretically say, wow, this is a liability. You need to do something about this. We're gonna drop you. We're not gonna insure you anymore. So that's probably your best avenue to go down.
I'll do that, see what comes out of it. But, you know, I'm getting tired, you know, just walk around, look at the son of a bitch up there. Is it gonna snap? Anytime? I don't wanna be under there.
Yeah, I don't, for what it's worth, I don't want you to be under there. So, uh, Dan.
Yeah, Al, does any portion of that tree hang over your property?
Yeah, well, I did, our trailer come through there and the the other riders. And he complains about it, because now you got a hole in the tree. Oh shit, you 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 cut this. You cut it off the one side where it's all green, and you're gonna get a hole in there.
It's two people right now in the big argument, you and him.
Yeah.
And that's who is involved, you and him.
So I gotta get the insurance company involved in it.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta go whatever avenue you can to get results, but unfortunately, it's not us.
Yeah, I don't wanna come over here and bitch every, every month.
It's okay, we understand.
It's okay, it's, it's a frustration, we get it.
I'm picturing all the time, you know, taking it out on you, because you're not doing nothing. You're not.
Okay, have a seat, Al. Anybody else have public comments? Was there anybody else signed in?
Beverly Rossman, four twelve Water Street, Stasburg, P A. Uh, I have a comment for the workday on Saturday. I'd like to have permission if you would uh, get uh, the things for me that I could do the bicycle um, portion in paint. I'd like to paint that in hunter green, so I need to know what information or what power.
Like the bike rack?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you probably don't wanna paint it on Saturday.
Okay.
It's supposed to rain like crazy.
Okay. Well, can that be purchased so that when I can?
I think, because that's not like a, that's not something kids play on, that's just like standard Rust-oleum. Um, Carl, can you check if there's any, any weird things like that? But then, yeah, we can pick that up.
And then when he has it, he can let me know when I pick it up and paint it at my convenience?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
And that's it for public.
And that is it for public comments. There are no other people on the virtual. Uh, so we'll move into the main items for discussion. Uh, the first item for discussion, we actually did in the reporting section, we'll bring that as part of the next month's format on on agenda. Um, Act five thirty-seven. The only new update on that is draft drawings were submitted to E one by Hydro Terra. We're just waiting for E one's comments. Once those are back, we can forward the plans over to Wolfster Store Authority for review and comment as well. Um, next item, Terra Tracker, uh, to give a typo on that one, Lisa missed today. As a Terra Tracker, uh, we had, as I mentioned before, sixteen additional pumping reports during May, totaling one hundred and thirty-one since the start of the program. Kimberly is working on getting that letter drafted, so it can be sent out during July, uh, that way we can get the remaining households to get pumped and inspected. Uh, the restoration of the current building, we're gonna be doing a working day with Dana Clark and Danielle Kepnerling from Kepnerling Preservation, Tiffet's Weaver Architects. Uh, on the eighteenth of July, uh, this will be some of the survey work, inspections on the building. Uh, Jesse plans on being there. I will try my best to be there as well.
July eighteenth.
Yeah, July eighteenth. Um, they anticipate it will probably be at eight in the morning until five at night, kinda kind of situation to get everybody that needs to come through and look at the building.
I'm working that today.
Uh, as long as I'm not out of state, I should be able to take off and be there, but I'll double check. Um, playground maintenance, Beverly mentioned, we are gonna be doing a playground maintenance day on Saturday, June twenty-eighth. Uh, this is gonna be some repairs on the bleachers, uh, redoing the the railroad ties and mulch around the playsets. Uh, moving the shed and uh, working on cutting some trees down that are are there that need to be removed. Um, weather permitting, right now, the weather forecast says it's supposed to rain in the afternoon, but that may be subject to change. We obviously can't be out there doing stuff that's belting down rain. Um, but we'll uh, we'll be in touch and we'll figure it out, but hopefully it holds from like eight to noon that we can get some stuff done. Um, next is. Okay, thank you. I think John, John had mentioned that he was gonna get a cooler full of ice and like some bottles of water, but more stuff, the better. Um, because raining or not, it's probably still gonna be pretty hot. Yeah, and that's, that's excellent. Um, future planning, um, not anything really big there. Um, you, the only thing really would be beautification, uh, and we have a a point on this later on. Uh, we're gonna be moving the memorial stone off of Main Street. Um, and then kind of the next step after it's moved, uh, will be to consider adding some some elements to it, like a flagpole, a light, maybe a little bit of like stonework or something to really truly make it a a fixture.
Feature.
Um, and then we had talked on Saturday, uh, when you weren't here of once it's. Yeah, I I. Um, but maybe we're doing an actual proper dedication of it when it's moved, having like military and veterans involved in.
That would be awesome.
The uh, oil, they're gonna do the base in two or three weeks, and then move the stones.
Okay.
Fantastic.
That's great. Making note of that. Two to three.
So now we'll know how to move stones in the future.
Yes.
What to do.
Yeah, and.
So it's a learning process.
It's a learning thing, but there's a certain charm to having them move the really, really heavy thing.
Oh, yeah.
That way, if anything happens to it, they're they're responsible for it, not us. Um, but now that's, that's the thing that's currently happening.
Thank you.
We're still, you know, looking at things about Main Street with the speed for efficiency.
When it, when we decide to have like a small ceremony, we'll certainly reach out to the new.
Oh, yeah, 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 that was actually the the game plan, is we have like the Reading Eagle and like the American House, and if we have anybody that's active military service or veterans or, you know, uh, you had mentioned contacting somebody you knew at one of the nearby bases and seeing if we can, you know.
Yeah.
Make it a, make it a proper thing. Uh, next, shortened, uh, long-term rentals, the letters are actively being sent out. Um, once we have that fully fleshed out, then we can start enforcing the shirt and long-term rental ordinances.
Thanks, Stan.
And yeah, largely thanks to the efforts of Dan with that list and getting everything spread away. Um, who was that? Who was that? Yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, you're, you're doing a great job. Um. Uh, the next is the joint comprehensive plan. Uh, we need to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven for the, uh. Uh, what's that acronym stand for? The EBJCP, it's the, uh, Berks Joint Comprehensive Plan. I forget what the E stands for, but either way, uh, we need to adopt that resolution so that we can participate in that. Yeah, okay, I thought it was Western. Yeah, this was just like. Thanks, Nancy, for really throwing me off. Um, I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven to participate in the Western Berks Joint Comprehensive Plan update.
Second.
By Irene, we're called Peters.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next is road maintenance. Uh, Carl is working on, uh, we got the, the bids in for this year. Uh, but Carl is working on, uh, earmarking road projects, uh, for the next five years. So that we have them kind of queued up and ready to go. Obviously, we can adjust as needed, but we'll at least have them sort of locked and loaded on how we wanna proceed over the. The next cycle of things.
And I, I forgot to say, Carl, thank you. I mean, you've been out there busting your butt and, uh, getting things done. And I, I, I know, I appreciate it. It, it's others, it may not seem like you're doing much, but you are. We, we know you are.
There's a lot of behind the scenes stuff. Not everything's possible.
Yeah.
So, uh, GIS system, um, we're gonna work on getting the app downloaded. We need to work with Solve IT on that, just from talking to some people. So I'm kind of thinking we should be able to run them on the computers that we have, like, I don't see any reason why it, it wouldn't. Um, but long-term, when we do have to replace the PCs for obsolescence, I'm thinking we should just go to a laptop model for portability. And then we just have the, the desk set up that when you need to use it in, in the office here, plug it into the screens. That way, if there's inclement weather or anything else. Carl needs to take the laptop and, in the truck with him for some reason, if you just unplug it and go. Uh, Sheridan Road South, uh, the drainage and pavement improvements, there's no new business on this, um.
Another typo.
Yeah.
You wrote payment instead of pavements.
We need to make sure we've got spell check turned on for you.
It won't catch that because it's, that's a.
Word is usually pretty good about telling you that you have something that's grammatically incorrect, like it'll, it'll blue line you. Um, anyway, uh, the extension of the stormwater pipe along Marion Drive, uh, Alguire was out and assessing the shoulder work. Um, I believe it was actually today that they were gonna start working on that. They did? Okay, I'll have to drive by. I'll, I'll have to drive by and take a look, but if you can grab pictures, that'd be good too.
Yeah, so, yeah, he's, he's, for his honor, sir, he's gonna go.
Okay, as the next couple of days happen with rain, let's keep a close eye on it, make sure that it's getting the desired result.
Well, it's good, I mean, the grass has to.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Understand that the grass isn't grown, but how did it hold up in this?
Didn't get to go by there on my way here.
What was actually done? I saw that they put grass seed down.
It was. He felt, he, he built up where that grass seed is, he built it up.
Yeah, there's a little bit of lip to try to direct step back off of Marion, kept losing one to the, one of the road towards the grates. Like, so we just gotta, just gotta see and make sure that that has the desired result, and if not, then we'll, we'll revisit.
During events and take some videos and see what's going.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next is Bollinger Road. There's no new discussion on this. Uh, we are not gonna go in, in depth on any of the updates on that. Because of, again, possible litigation surrounding that matter. Um, then we get the exciting part of the evening, which is the road projects. Um, we advertised and got back bids, which were opened earlier today at SDE. Um, the projects included, uh, Main Street and Richland. Uh, School Road from Smallthorpe Church, School Road from Church to Marion Drive. Uh, Woods Road, which I think is technically actually Woods Drive. Um, and Canal Road. Um, so the, the main part of the bid, and Colin, before we get too far, the way, the way this bidding works, uh, the main, the base bid and the alternate bids. Are we able to mix and match on that, or is it a situation where you have to accept everything on the bid card based bid plus alternates?
I can take the lowest bid.
Yeah, well, but I, but I, my curiosities, because it was.
Some part of some packages are less expensive than other parts.
Stick to the packet, or can we kind of à la carte?
I think we have to sit to the.
I, I think we have to stick to the pack, but this is why I'm asking, asking the attorney.
It have to be awarded tonight?
No.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be awarded tonight. It's, it's, it's a, it's about two hundred thou- or, yeah, it's about, uh.
I would, I, can I, I would.
About two thousand dollars. It's not anything major.
No, no, it's, it's. It's more comp- it's more complicated.
Between the two prices.
So the difference, it's, oh, okay, so let me actually rephrase that. So the, the alternate bids, it's a difference of about two thousand. The base bid, however, is the difference of about ten thousand. That one. NC Supply Incorporated for Main Street and Richland was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And H and K Group was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Um, however.
Total.
H and, oh, no, so like, here's the, here's the breakdown. So if you look at.
Here's, 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 here's the question that I need answered, okay?
Yeah.
Must the base bid be awarded as part of any contract? And, and. What did the, what, uh, under what impression were the bidders when they were bidding?
Um, I was not at the, we did meeting, Troy. That might be a youth question.
So, the, I did, embarrassed. The, the instructions that the bidders were provided indicate that the contract would be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Based on either base bid only, base bid with alternate bid items only, base bid with supplemental bid items. Base bid with supplemental bid and, and alternate bid items, base bid, all contracts combined or base bid contracts individually.
Okay, so that sounds like it has to be.
But, but when I, when I hear the term. Base bid, okay? I assume that the work has to include the base. And I don't know if that's.
Well, we're not talking like road base. We're talking.
The ba- the base project.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
You build, you build a widget. And then you have options, you have options A, B, C, and D.
Except that they're not dependencies on each other.
Well, and that's, and that's the question.
Yeah. But the way Troy just read that out loud, if I were to comment on that, I would assume that it's. Any one of those iterations, all of which included the base bid as a descriptive item on each one of the categories of things.
Can I read that?
Uh, can you, can you pass it down? Give me your thoughts on that. That's, that's where I would, I would land with that. Again, nineteen oh eight?
Nineteen oh eight.
But yeah, back to that original point, the prices.
If the, if the. Base bid must be awarded as part of the, the RFP. And we believe that the language in our RFP reflects that, that we can make an award tonight.
Yeah.
If we're not, if we're not sure, then, then we really shouldn't.
Now, so I, I think we're, I'm pretty sure on that. And honestly, when you, when you get down to the, the nitty-gritty of it. When you compare the alternate bids between the two, they're within two hundred dollars of each other. So we would just wanna go with Pency, who is the cheaper one on, uh, do, do you have this column? Like, this might help make sense of what I'm rambling about.
I guess, might, yeah. Were we satisfied with the work that was done by this group?
I mean, H and K did a good job, um, but they're not the lowest qualified bidder on that. Yeah.
How did you write the request and bid?
Well, that's, that's this.
That's what Jesse's reading.
That's what Jesse's reading. And based on what Troy just read out, it seems like the, the iterations of, of the way things could be awarded every single one of those permutations.
For the determination of the apparent low bidder, when. Unit price bids are submitted, bids shall be compared on the basis of the total of products of the estimated quant, quant. The quantity of each item and unit price bid for that item together with any lump sums. That's just that one section.
Like nineteen oh eight though, so let's read that out again. Bidders shall note that the owner reserves the right to award the contracts to the lowest responsible bidder respectively as follows as applicable. Base bid only. Base bid with alternate bid items only. Base bid with supplemental bid items only. Base bid with supplemental bid items and alternate bid items. Base bid, all contracts combined or base bid contracts individually. All of those things included base bid. So. So, a- at this point, like Colin, having, having seen what I, uh, what I had there.
If we, if we've all reached a consensus that the base bid has to be included, I, I could, I can tell you that. The contract should be for the base bid and alternatives A, B, and C should be worked to.
Pency, yeah.
Yeah, alternate D is Canal Road, which you, you wanna look at getting. Uh, for next year.
Yeah.
Um, so. You don't have.
We don't have to award that one. Yeah, we just can't switch between suppliers. We don't have to, we could award base C, B, and D and skip C. But we can't. But we don't have to award all the alternates. We just have to stick to the one company. Okay.
Well, if we can do it, I'd like to make.
I'd like to. And this is, this is why I'm continuing that discussion is I want us to reach the point of being comfortable with it, uh, so that we can, we can authorize it. Certainly.
Uh, when we say responsible. How do we base that? Is that on your expertise or?
So, so the term of art is lowest responsible bidder, um, res- responsible really means two things. One, have they submitted, uh, a bid that complies with the RFP? And two, have they done work for us in the past that's irresponsible? It really, it really doesn't, doesn't mean much other than have they submitted a compliant bid.
And, and we do define that in here. Nineteen oh four is in evaluating whether the bidder is responsible, owner shall consider. Qualifications of the bidder and may consider the qualifications and experience of subcontractors and suppliers proposed for those proportions, or those portions. Of the work for which the identity of subcontractors and suppliers must be submitted as provided in bidding.
So for, so, so for example, some RFPs will require the bidders to provide a narrative on the history of the company or. The current financials, and that also is helpful in evaluating responsibility and whether they can actually do the job. But it's, it doesn't mean a whole lot, and typically, you, you can't pick. One, you can't pick the high bidder or the low bidder because you don't believe the, the low bidder is respons- is responsible.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm guessing that you have experience with most of these people. So you know, you know, they'll show up and their quality work and they'll back their product.
The, the two people that responded, H and K did work for us last year, and they did very good work, and Pency has done work, I think, for us in. Maybe prior years, that, but they do a, a ton of work in the area.
Yeah.
Um, none of them were like, each shovel service, like, you know.
Industry low bidder, you immediately get a little nervous about.
Yeah, yeah. No, with municipality stuff, we're actually bound by law to go lowest qualified bidder. Qualified, yeah, but the qualifications essentially are the same as responsible.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So, I think they did submit experience, uh, references.
Okay.
Uh, so. Um, Pency submitted fifteen references, H and K. So, they, yeah, and they both used the same sub for the seal, the seal coat.
Yeah.
Um, which is, i- it is actually kind of a major portion of the work because of, if, if the school road alternates. Get awarded, that will be a major portion of it.
Are, are we doing? This year?
Um, we should, I think, skip Canal Road and try and dirt and low volume gravel grant that, so it would be A, A, B, and C.
Yep.
So in that, in that case, just to announce, announce it.
Yeah.
Agent K submitted a, a bid totaling five hundred sixty-seven thousand. Ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. Pency's bid was five hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
Um.
You have the same numbers, Peter?
No, I'm actually questioning that, because like, if you look at the, uh, the thing, it's total alternate bid five thirty.
Well, that, that's, that's only for A, B.
As I say, that's only, oh, okay, okay, I see what you're doing now, because you, I, I did the same thing first. That hundred and forty-five or hundred and fifty-seven is not included in that, that total.
Correct.
So. Uh, the total for the Pency one would actually be the one forty-five plus the five thirty minus the, the, the one twenty-two.
Correct, which gets you five fifty-three, seven twenty-eight, eighty-one.
Thank you.
That's why I have.
So in that, in that case. The board will make a motion to. Award the bid for the, for the base bid, also an A, B, and C. In the amount of five fifty-three, seven twenty-eight, eighty-one to Pency. On the condition that it complies with, uh. Any. Conditions of the RFP subsequent to being awarded, um, which includes but is not limited to signing a contract. Submitting insurance certificates. If haven't already, and providing a performance bond.
Start time and time.
We can do paving at certain times of the year, so the goal here is to get this approved tonight so that we can get it done this year, so.
Yeah, we, we gave them ninety days in the, in the contract. We gave them ninety days.
Ninety days.
So, he said, did you get enough of what Colin said that I don't have to try to parrot that back? Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the bids. From Pency Supply for the base bid, alternate bid A, B, and C, uh, for the total of, it was five hundred and fifty.
Five fifty-three, seven twenty-eight, eighty-one.
The five fifty-three, seven twenty-eight, uh, eighty-one. Uh, subject to, uh, compliance with, uh, any conditions of the RFP, including but not limited to. Uh, signing of a contract and insurance.
And submission of the performance bond.
And submission of the performance bond. Thank you, Colin.
We made the motion.
I'll second.
Second by Jesse. Motion made by Peter, second by Jesse, we're called Peters.
Aye.
Irene.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
We're not doing D.
No, so we're gonna try to put D in for a dirt and low volume gravel road grant, because that was, that's a, a good strong candidate for that one. So we have the, the project obviously already designed out to the point of being able to be bid, which means we have it designed out to the point where we can submit it in for a grant.
Yes, A, B, and C are major.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Now, they're all, they're all in not. So is D, but we have a pretty good chance of getting D on a grant.
It drops our, um. So good fuel funding to about two hundred thousand dollars there, give or take some.
Yeah, then we'll have to turn back for next year, so. Yeah, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, what was that, Kelly? You know?
Uh, what's. The way it's on, on the agenda is different than the way it was.
Okay, so, yeah, so, uh, Woods is C. Uh, Canal is D. And then we've got, uh. School Road, two sections of School Road. And that's actually, uh, A and B. And then Richland and Main Street were the base bid. So there were some things that were combined up and then things that were split. Everything but Canal. Roadwork.
Yeah.
Um.
Just wanted to push.
Totally.
Sheridan Road didn't go well. Where I'm an issue aside.
Yeah.
There ain't concern with these.
These are pretty cut and dry. I'll defer to Carl on that, but Sheridan Road was interesting in the sense that. In order to do it with the, the liquid fuels funding, we had to stay to the original profile and confines of the road. Otherwise, that's considered road widening, which is a whole different thing, um, which we can't really use liquid fuels for, or we have to do it in a very specific way. Uh, which is why we did that that way and then did general fund to try to do the, the shoulder work on it. So if we have to go back and revisit a little bit on that, because it's like, the stones are getting kicked out or something, then we'll do that as part of, of normal maintenance. But, um, that wasn't a, I don't wanna say this. Um, that wasn't an omission so much on that project as it was a necessity of being able to use the, the funding that we had for it. Um, trash collections, um, we're looking at the JP Mascaro contract. We're one year into the contract. I had some conversation with Colin. Um, I think we should have a, a real quick executive session, uh, at the end of the meeting about that. Um, and then one of the things that I do wanna explore as a matter of just public knowledge is, uh, talk to some neighboring municipalities that have Mascaro that don't do the billing. That Mascaro doesn't do the billing, um, just to see what the cost differences are between our, our run rate and theirs. Um. Saldo, there's no new items on that. Uh, Blue Spruce, there's no business, uh, new business on that. Same thing with Twilight Acres. Uh, one seventy-five Charming Forge Road, uh, we need to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash eight, which would modify the agricultural security area. That we previously approved. Um, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash eight for the one seventy-five Charming Forge Road Agricultural Security Area.
And I'll second it.
Thank you, my Peter, second. They definitely have been.
Aye.
Irene.
Aye.
Uh, Alden on sixth. Um. We actually got notice, I can't remember if it was today or yesterday, but they've drawn their NPDS permit. Um, which is usually a pretty strong indicator that the project as it exists right now is not gonna move forward. Um, they may come back with changes or something, but a- as it stands right now, that's. Pretty much at a standstill, possibly at a, a stop. So.
We'll still have the planning commission meeting.
That's what we need to figure out. Um.
I don't have confirmation on that yet. I've sent.
Yeah, it's like, like I said, this is hot off the press, but usually that withdrawal of that permit is a pretty solid sign that they've abandoned or restructuring the project. Um, so.
Considering the number.
Yeah, we're reconsidering any major aspect of it. Yeah. So. We'll have to keep a close eye on it. We'll find out if the July fifteenth meeting is still needed or not. If we don't have to have it, we don't have to have it. Um.
Would you please notify one of us in that meeting?
Yeah, so if that can't, if that can't, then we'll have Lisa send something over.
Send the check and serve.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Uh, equipment repair. Uh, Carl says there's nothing actively broken right now other than the road brush, which we'll talk about, I think, under road crew equipment. Um. Township property, we're still working on getting everything, uh, cataloged and then I can start spitting out barcodes for things. Um. Trash dumping, I don't think we've had anybody dump anything recently, which is great. Um, however, I am still looking at getting, uh, a good price on the, uh, cellphone data. Um, trail cams. That way people don't just destroy it and then we lose all the footage on it. Um. I've looked into a little bit. I'm not dazzled with some of the prices on things. I think we can do better. Um. Road crew equipment, uh. We're gonna be looking at getting pricing for a new brush mower, uh, or excuse me, brush for the mower. Uh, the one that we have currently is from nineteen seventy-one, um, and is in not so great shape. A lot of the internals are, are just kind of worn. Uh, the cost to do a lot of those repairs are around a thousand dollars. So Carl's gonna look at what it would be to just get a. New or new to us brush or look at the, the, the. Options that we have available for blowers. As well, rather than, you know, potentially. Doing a lot of repair work on something that is well past its useful life. Getting something that is a little more, I'll, I'll say contemporary, something from the twenty-first century. Um. Road issues, uh, as we talked about before. Uh, we wanna try to address some of the.
Wait, wait, what was the trading in the small truck?
Oh, trading, oh, uh, Carl had mentioned that, uh, after we get all the roadwork stuff done. Um, we should start looking at, uh. Like municipal bid and things like that to see if we can get a, a newer, not new, but newer. Uh, truck, because ours are, are starting to get fairly old and they're starting to show their age. Um. So that'll be something that we can work on in, in future months, but that was a, a little posted note from Carl. You should consider starting to scout this out a bit. Um, and that is something that we could use liquid fuel. Money for. Um. Road issues, Huntsinger Drive has some visibility issues. Jesse found this out unfortunately firsthand. Um, we're gonna be ordering some watch children, like, uh, children playing signs. You got them already? Excellent. Um, getting those put up as well as, uh, getting curbs marked so, so that we have proper line of sight at intersections like with the alleys. Um, now that the weather is warm.
Do we need signage? No parking from here to corner?
We have some of those and then.
The curve painted, you don't need the sign. You can have.
You can have both. Yeah.
Some people need the signs.
Yeah, I know. We, we had put, I think it was like the second year when I was on the board, we put up the no parking here to corner signs.
If, if we. If, if we mark the curves where the state says that it's supposed to be marked for no park, you don't have to make legislation for that.
Yeah, that's supported. You don't.
State already says you can't park, park, park this far from the crosswalk.
Mm-hmm.
In town here, we're not, nor, nowhere near that.
Okay.
So if, if we just paint those curves, then legally it's enforceable.
Okay, thank you.
Unless, unless you wanna make it a longer.
No.
Well, within the state recommendation.
Yeah, as long as we stay within state, we don't have to do a separate ordinance like we do for placing like, you know, driveway ahead or speed signs or anything like that, but. Um. I think every little bit will help on this, um, mostly to make the drivers a little more. Aware, uh, I wouldn't even say like cautious, but like just giving them the extra bit of awareness that they have. Because the kids are gonna be kids. They're gonna go screaming down the street as fast as they can on their bikes. So it's making sure that drivers are able to effectively see them and react to them. And are more aware of the fact that this could be a thing that, you know, some kid just comes flying out of nowhere. Um. Meetings, uh, we're gonna remove this from the agenda, but we have officially switched from Teams to Zoom.
Nope, we went from Zoom to Teams.
Oh, yeah.
It's okay.
Let's see. Um, yeah, we're fully on Teams, which is great. Um, the links and stuff are up on the website and, uh. I'll make sure that Zoom is completely shut down. Uh. Snow emergency, the. Uh. Yeah. Say again?
Twenty-six, yes, some more.
Twenty-six, oh, okay. Yeah, go for it. I didn't even notice the sinkhole, sorry. Um, that was in the. Engineer report that you, you gave me, right?
That was interesting pictures.
There's in any of those works. I know you took pictures.
Well, there was, there was a write-up of some of the things that Carl.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The pictures aren't in here, but the write-up is.
Pictures were here.
Yeah.
With all the email that Carl dropped.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here we go. Roadmaster. Okay, so. The, uh, Carl, actually, you know, rather than me trying to paraphrase this, you wanna just tell us about the, uh, the wonderful sinkhole?
I think that's a forty-eight inch pipe going into Ford Road and it has failed. It's rusted. The bottom is paved in and the sidewalls are collapsing. They created a sinkhole. On Ford Road. That was a. Roughly two foot by two foot by two foot deep.
Hmm.
And I believe there's probably gonna be a sinkhole on the other side as well. Because it's failing on both sides and both sides of the pipe. In, in my opinion, I spoke with Troy. It's not repairable. It needs to be replaced. We are working now to figure out. That situation. Uh, I'd love to push it to next year because that. Would definitely be an LBDR.
Yeah.
Program, but I, I, I don't think it's safe to keep it till next year. I, I think we're really gonna have to do that this year.
Can we get the, uh, kind of the, the figure on what it would cost and if we can do something like a, the LDP pipe? Through there or if it has to be like a box culvert or something?
Think, and I could be wrong, but once we get in, we're gonna have to get the state involved in this already because of the size of, of, uh, the drainage area. Uh, so. They need several permits. And I think they're gonna look at this and say that that pipe's not big enough. To today's standard.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Yeah.
Which means it's, it's.
We're looking.
Not gonna be. Just. Cut it out and redo it.
It's gonna be rework. And again, it'll probably be a box.
The full width.
Uh.
Did you get out? Either yesterday or today to, to see if there was water flowing through?
Yeah, there, yeah, it was not quite that much, but it was.
You know, the reason is because, you know, it's way deep. He looks at some of the streams, if it's intermittent. Meaning if it dries up at any point.
I don't think it ever dries up. Not, not from what I've seen yet, but.
That may preclude you from having to upsizing. However, uh.
If not, you go full banquet, then that's, uh, uh.
Still have to go from head wall to head wall and. Place that pipe, which we still need GP eleven, but.
Yeah.
Try and not to have to upsize because. Then it's gonna reconvene the headwalls.
It's, it's, uh, double the project costing.
At least.
If not more.
Yeah.
Um.
Is there any potential of collapse there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Should that road be closed?
Like.
A jet.
Uh, but I, I do think it should be taken care of this year. I'd love to put off the next year and not have to pay for it. Again, I don't. I can't.
It may not last that long.
I can't do that under a good conscience.
A couple more good storms, that thing's gonna be.
Yeah, let's, let's start by getting.
What's gonna happen is you're gonna see in the near future. A dip starting on the other side. But, yeah. I don't think anybody's gonna fall through. But it's just gonna get.
It's gonna get worse and worse rapidly.
Especially if they have more storms.
Yeah, so let's, let's start by getting our wits about us of, uh, really what the requirement is gonna be for doing it. Um, and then figuring out what a, an estimate of cost is, and then we gotta figure out what it, the.
Okay.
So that's, that's why I said, let's. Figure out the road stuff before we worry about it and then.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So that being said, when, when do we pull the plug in that road?
We'll have to keep a close eye on it because this is what we had to do with the other colts.
I did it every day.
Yeah, we kept them open as long as we could.
I filled. Within one day, it, it settled about inches. It, it hasn't moved since and this was.
It's more than a week ago?
Yeah, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, maybe.
Two weeks ago.
Uh. And then there's nothing that I can see on the other side that's different. Than that. So, yeah, no, I'm looking at it every day. That's usually. Usually where I go on my way to work. I go out there, check it out, go back. If not, I check, check it out sometime during the day.
We gotta close it, we gotta close it, but we'll keep it open as long as it's reasonable and safe to do so, kind of like we did with the other culverts while they were passable, whether it's one lane. Or both lanes. Will allow it, but if it becomes a safety hazard, then we just shut it down in detail.
And then we have the, uh. Erosion thing on Church Road, but I think we can do that. In-house, uh. That's gonna be about a two foot by two foot. Action excavation. I mean, we'll have to shut the road for it to mess around with it. It's inconvenient for my buddy, but.
That being said, we should get some road closure sawhorses, the long ones. Um, we could have used them for the car show, you know that.
Yeah, no, I agree.
We don't have that.
I don't think there's any of the other, you guys looking at.
Well, I looked all over the place.
No, we don't have any of those.
We don't have any of them. We're only down to barrels and those two are getting pretty. Galvanized ones, and that's it.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I agree that we should get some, some actual, like, closed sawhorses.
We need some.
John had a problem.
Gear for road crew, not.
People going around and stuff.
Yeah, that's what we had at, at the car show, and if we would have a sawhorse there, they would have had an issue, but we didn't have, we only had the drums. We rented. Thank you.
Yeah, get prices because I know we, we had. With the culverts, one of them was completely closed and. I think we had the, the lighter of the sawhorses. People would get out of their car. And they would move them.
Yeah, I believe.
And then drive around them. We're like, there, there is no road there. Like, they're gonna have to turn around in like a hundred feet. Um. But, yeah. Anyway, so, uh, yeah, get the, uh, the details, uh, on the church road thing. Um, from what you had said, it does sound like it's something that you'd be able to do. In-house, especially if you have like John or Abby helping you.
Probably a thousand dollars.
We concrete anchor them to the ground.
I mean, probably.
If you have to close the road and you get the concrete there, you're.
So we actually, we'd have to load them up onto a truck or a trailer or something like that, but we have a bunch of those, the, what, Jersey blocks? I think they're, they're.
Uh, these are those like. Rectangle shaped ones.
Yeah.
With the rebar loops. Is that what they are?
Yeah, uh, we had used them. We actually used those to close one of the roads because people kept moving the, the sawhorses. Uh, but we do have some of those. Yeah, we just gotta get them from point A to point B. The backhoe can pick it up. Yeah. They can pick it up, but I can't transport it that far. So we'd have to get it onto the, like a trailer, like that big trailer that we have moving out there, take the backhoe out and take them off, which, you know. Yeah. It's doable. Uh, but we do have some stuff that we can. Use for a, a little more, uh, heavy-handed approach to closing something.
Hopefully it doesn't come to that.
Yeah. Um, okay, uh, Carl, before I move on to, um, snow emergency briefly, is there any, anything else that you still wanna cover in road issues?
No, no, I, I, I'm spending enough money donating.
It, it, it's needed. We just gotta figure out how to do it.
No, no, thank you.
Uh, uh, snow emergency, we're still gonna be figuring out the exact specifics of the parking one side or the other. Um, I was looking at, uh. Couple of, uh, sample ordinances from some other townships to see if we can maybe just shamelessly steal that a little bit. Um, and then run it by Colin, but I think that's gonna be fairly straightforward on what we would memorialize on, you know, when we declare a snow emergency. The first day. Is this side of the street. Second day is this side of the street. That way. Carl or whoever else is plowing can effectively hopefully get both sides. Um, nice and neat. We don't have to worry about weaving around cars. Uh, the history items, we are still looking at, uh, potentially donating some items. Things like duplicates as well as, uh, setting up some time with the historical society. Uh, around potentially housing. The artifacts for us, uh, during any sort of building repair or remediation. Um. Jesse, I think you had sort of the baton on that because you knew somebody.
Well, the gentleman actually approached me. He lives in Stonecroft.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so if we can get in contact with them, I'd love to have a sit-down conversation or Jesse even have a sit-down conversation with him about, um, us. Having the, the historical artifacts with them. Um. They're gonna be infinitely better taken care of with them than they are, uh, right now with us. And it's gonna be, uh. Not a good place for them if we start having to tear things out of the building and do remediation, those, you know, lead paint and anything else. Uh, I haven't contacted Jesse. Jesse had the, the baton on that one. Um, and he was already in contact with Jesse, so, yeah. Uh.
Peter. Yes. Gentleman that owns that storage units right across.
Hmm.
Uh. Maybe we could approach him and ask him to volunteer one of his storage units for us to store things in.
I doubt it.
Where they can. Be placed in. Tubs.
Yeah.
That are, you know.
Yeah.
Bug proof, mouse proof and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And those things can be stored.
Yeah, I mean, we could get a, like a storage. Thing dropped on the property too.
Donate one.
I, I don't know that he's gonna donate one, but we can certainly ask.
Yeah.
Um, but the, the big. The big concern was like the, for me, it was like the temperature, the humidity, you know.
Right.
Um, just putting it into a storage bin, it's, it's gonna actually.
I think it was like one seventy-nine a month I started.
Easy enough, yeah, and then there's some other things that are gonna be a little more sensitive. If Topahawk and Historical Society, that this is, that's what they do, that's their whole, their whole thing, so if they say like, yep, we've got enough storage space that we can, you know, take stuff in. Cool, cuz then we can also, like I said, look at donating some duplicates to them, like donating some stuff to the school. Um, getting it so that it's out and enjoyed largely by the community, and then most of it comes home to Marion.
We'll arrange for a meeting with Jesse to go through the building.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, office supplies, um, I haven't had time. Uh, like ninety percent of them are in with the logo and the graphics of it. Um, we need a safe uh from the B Sats, uh, of course, Lisa attended, we uh, we have a kind of a responsibility to keep some of the. Stuff locked up that isn't necessarily locked up. I mean, it's it's locked up, it's not in a safe, it's not in a fire safe. Um, we gave the approval to spend up to two hundred and fifty dollars for a a safe. Not looking at anything big like we have at the other township, just enough to put a couple of three-ring binders in and uh. Like checks and the checkbooks and things like that. Porta potty, uh, we discussed on Saturday getting a porta potty for uh the road crew, cuz we, right now at the old building, they don't have any sort of bathroom facilities. Um, I believe Lisa got uh pricing on that. That's some Potters Walters, okay. The standard unit with a hand gel sanitizer is twenty bucks a week, twenty dollars and seventy-five cents to be exact, and the ADA compliant one. Is thirty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents per week. So, if we were gonna put something over at the park. We would wanna definitely put an ADA compliant one there, but if we're putting something back by the. Uh, like the garage area there for Carl and John and Abby to use while they're working, that would be. Call it eighty-three dollars a month roughly. But I think we we need to give them some way of of using the restroom, especially during the hot days, so they don't have to like. Either hold it or come over here or run up to Turkey Hill or something, so um. Let me do the math quick, this is twenty seventy-five times four. It's about, it's a little less than a thousand dollars a year to to have that. Um, and ideally, what I'd like to do, once we get the trees cut down and the shed moved. Uh, the next thing we should turn our attention to, cuz it shouldn't have impact any grant opportunities for the building. Uh, would we get that pipe replaced from the building to? The thing, which we should be able to do in-house, we can dig it up ourselves, we can replace the pipe, pull the permits, you know, all the, all the bells and whistles there. Uh, and then we wouldn't need the porta potty for theoretically more than a couple of months.
Now, back in the day, the store inspector used to be there when you asked.
The S E O, I think, just has to see it while you have it. So we wanna coordinate that because that is a thoroughfare for uh properties past where the township building is. Um, so when we know we're digging.
We'll have to see how deep it is, it's over that roadway, roadway. Under the road.
It's under the road.
So I wouldn't know anything less than schedule eighty.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, no, we'll 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 make sure it's it's by the book. Um, but I don't think we need to. We don't have to.
That's cuz there's a fern pole sitting right under that office.
Yeah, like I said, I think we can do it ourselves, that's not, that's not complicated in the grand scheme of things. Um, but in the interim, for at least the, let's say, three or four months between now and then, I think we should get the.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Unit with hand gel sanitizer for twenty dollars and seventy-five cents per month. Or per week, excuse me. I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second.
Bush may but Peter, second by Irene Roopall Peter. Irene.
The next item? All right, that was uh um, for me, the cards, Sue's card was terminated when she retired, yeah. Yeah, I called up today just to confirm and we terminated Don Height's card.
Found, I found the card, so that's why.
Yeah, we didn't destroy the physical card, yeah, so it's um, that's been terminated and Don Height's card has been terminated.
By the way, has anybody heard, is Don doing any better?
I I I ran into him, he's very sore yet.
Seeing the pictures of that that car accident, that is, that is good that he is only sore. Performance evaluations, we're gonna be scheduling the first set of annual performance evaluations for Lisa and Carl in July. So you both have that that fun to look forward to. Thirty-four is grass clippings and yard-related items, Kraft is sending out uh numerous letters of notices uh for violation around things with the I P M C.
I have a question, forgive me for not reviewing the the workshop meeting, um, but just like to tangent to this. I know you had talked about there was grass clip clippings being discharged into the street, but the police can't do anything about it unless they witness it. I can't remember if it was South Heidelberg or Heidelberg Township that has an ordinance that basically states that. If that grass clipping is in front of your house and one of your property, you are responsible. Whether or not you physically discharge it yourself, but you are responsible.
It's like uh. Snow and ice on sidewalks.
Right, exactly, so I kinda was tinkering with that, do you want me to continue to write it up? We'll give it to him for approval and we'll go from there, okay.
Yeah, cuz the the I P M C already covers like the length. Required for cutting, so any, if we have any updates to the grass clipping ordinance, it would be supplementary things.
As as anything, cuz it's in the street, and so like, do you have to actually witness them do it? It's obvious who's responsible for that discharge, so it's just such a hazard, it really is, and then. All these areas where we have storm drains, you're just calling the drain. I go out and I sweep mine, I keep everything off the road as much as possible. Yeah, but now, and and since we sent the letter to everyone along my road, a lot of people were pretty angry with me. Um, I don't care, but everyone's keeping the grass off the street, it it's a hazard, it's a hazard for motorcycles, it's just, it's not a good thing.
Next thing is the committee for the building, um, do we have the list of names? Did you print it out though?
I have it here.
So our our stance on this that we decided on Saturday.
It's all good.
Uh, rather than call every single person and say like, are you sure you really wanna do this, is we'll pick ten people. And go down the list. And the first seven people that we call that accept it, those are the seven people, anybody. Says I'm, you know, I'm not actually interested, please move to the next person. So. The list of people who are interested are Lee Dice, Ellie Pickard, Sue Helm. I can't read that. For uh Virginia Zartman, maybe? I don't know if she's. Here anymore to be able to do that, I think she's in New Jersey, so I'm gonna go ahead and strike that. Don Height, uh, Matt Barnhart, uh, Mary Ann Keppley, Beverly Brosman, uh, Shannon. Uh, Sweeney. Uh, Jennifer Tripp. Kenny Wyden, uh. Wyden, Wydenheimer, I think. Yeah, it's hard to read some people's handwriting, uh, Billy Cobal. Brian Haybaker, Susan Peak. Sarah Hadfield, Franklin Troutman, uh, Dave Sunn and Maggie Hopkins. And uh Sarah Shirk Hadfield. So I think uh we should definitely have Matt and Beverly or or two. Two immediate contenders, um.
So so let's also remember, we're we're gonna have to pick them from different areas to just make sure we're gonna.
Matt's sort of. And then Beverly's town uh town center.
Shannon Sweeney, I think, is my road, is that correct?
Shannon Sweeney is Tulpview, yes. So let me, let me start writing this down, I'm gonna forget. So we've got. Beverly. Town Center. Got. Matt.
Barnhart's. Charming Boys.
Yeah, he's uh outer area. Yeah, short, shorthanding for myself, so I remember this, um, and then we've got Shannon. Many issues. Area. We don't have anybody from Stonecroft on here, unfortunately.
Susan Peak is from Town Center, but she's been here forever, keeps her property really nice. I know her son.
I I am all for. Recommendation, so let me. Town Center. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. I think he's ignoring you.
I just wanted to make sure I got your attention.
Yeah, I know. Don Height, we could do, Don Height is a Town Center person. I don't know if Don's gonna wanna do that right now cuz it's being sore. Then. Sure, so going from top to bottom, we've got Lee Dice, Kelly Pickard or Picard, uh, Sue Helm. Don Height, Matt Barnhart, Mary Ann Keppley, Beverly Brosman, Shannon Sweeney, Jennifer Tripp. Kenny Wydenheimer, or Wydenha- uh, yeah, Wydenheimer, uh, Billy Cobal, Brian Haybaker, Suzanne Peak. Sarah Hadfield, Franklin Troutman, Dave Sunn, Maggie Hopkins, and Sarah Shirk Hadfield. Possibly they have. A hyphenated name on this one? Might be the same person, the email address is the same, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Right now, we've got four people uh with a mix of Town Center or areas outside of Town Center. As we don't have any Stonecroft, we're gonna just have to distribute uh three and four or four and three between those two categories.
Any of the names of some of those?
I recognize some of the names, yeah, um, like Brian Haybaker, for example. Jennifer Tripp, I don't know that I specifically, I I might know her if I saw her, but I it's not ringing a bell for me. Thoughts?
I'm skewed towards the ladies, but.
Yes, sir, point of view, he might be an.
We've got Kenny Wydenheimer, who's on William Penn Boulevard.
Now I know I recognize the name.
Uh, Mary Ann Keppley.
Who's that last one?
This one, Suzanne Peak, one forty-seven.
This is just advisory.
Yeah, everybody, everybody on this list, if they wanna show up to meetings and participate, they absolutely can, the seven people that are on the the committee are responsible for. Filtering all of that and. Yeah, e- exactly, exactly, and your voice, the intent of this is to have your voice heard, it's not to have these seven people sit up there and. Ignore everybody else while they look at things, so.
I'll go to these meetings, I'm not running it. Hands are off the wheel.
How do we feel about Maggie Hopkins? I do not.
Looking at, that, is that Mary Ann Hopkins?
Uh, it says Maggie. M A G G I E.
Twenty-one main?
Twenty-one main, yeah, she's a nice lady, okay.
Well, if she's a mean lady, which is the one.
Good perspective.
She she was a writer for a paper.
I think she might have some background.
So we got a bunch of Town Centers, um, Kelly Pickard or Picard is out on Smallth Road. I think that might be good to have some uh input. Uh, so this is, this is getting stuff from like Keppelring and from outside sources and. Really having them dig through it rather than us dig through it. And then be able to say like, we looked through, you know, this and that and the other thing, and this is what we think is the best thing, here's, you know, stuff for your consideration. It's to to help produce better. Better data for consideration and and hopefully get better results out of it as as. That's kind of the net product of it.
Transparency.
Hey, I'm gonna look for somebody that is off of the main. Um, I have Brian on here, um, Kenny. Uh, let's, I I actually, again, wouldn't be able to pick him out of a crowd, but I know. Yeah, we're going for, we're going for ten, that way, we'll start at the top and see if somebody says like, you know, when I signed that I was, but I got busy or, you know, whatever. That we're not having to wait until the next meeting, we can just go down the list. Kenny is. Area, uh, one more. Sarah Hadfield. That's like only person from that side of that side of town.
There's a theme here, yeah, you're easy goat.
First woman on this board, so.
It's a Palatine, so west end.
Yes, I know, okay.
Again, I I could probably recognize her in a crowd, but like, if you asked me to like sketch artist or something. Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Okay, so our our list of ten candidates is uh Beverly Brosman. Matt Barnhart. Shannon Sweeney. Suzanne Peak. Brian Haybaker. Actually, I have Suzanne twice, hold on. Fair play error on my part.
Now you gotta move those guys up though.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just put this down. I'm gonna make the recommendation for Billy Cobal, simply because he does, he does care, he does try to get involved. And it might be good to have a uh a disruptor opinion on on something like that. I haven't looked at this. Yes, yeah, um, but it it might be good to have somebody with a a a contrary opinion on. Yeah, it's sometimes it's good to throw that into the mix. So, okay, starting, starting at the beginning. Uh, Beverly, Matt Barnhart, uh, Shannon Sweeney, Suzanne Peak, Brian Haybaker. Uh, Maggie Hopkins. Kelly Picard, Kenny Wydenheimer, uh, Sarah. Hadfield, thank you, Sarah Hadfield, and then Billy Cobal. No disagreements? Okay, that's what we're gonna go with, so uh, let's start reaching out to people, letting them know, uh, going sequentially. And first seven people that respond yes are. Uh, they're part of that committee and we can start scheduling meetings. Give that back to Lisa, since that is the original copy. Yeah, yeah, but we have to advertise because they're a public meeting. Okay, we already talked about the Veterans Memorial Stone, uh, the one thing that I do wanna mention on that is uh. Uh, the M T C A is, I forget, is it the whole thing or half? For that one, cuz the the ball, like the basketball court was one thing and then the stone was the other.
The memorial stone, we were gonna pay half.
Okay, and then the ba- the basketball, you guys are good, okay.
That's scheduled for the like fourteenth and sixteenth.
Fourteenth, they're gonna do the cracks and seal it. Sixteenth, they're gonna stripe it, the seventeenth thing.
And M T C A will be paying.
Yes, thank you, thank you to the Community Association, they're actually uh taking charge on uh resurfacing and refinishing the basketball court. Um, they're gonna pay for it, it's gonna be done, as Kelly mentioned, on the fourteenth and the sixteenth. Um, and then the memorial stone, they're actually gonna split the cost of that with the township. Uh, to have that relocated from Main Street over to the golf field area. And that should be sometime in the next two to three weeks, like Carl had said earlier in the meeting. Um, Emergency Management Committee report we already did, we're gonna move that on for the next round of meetings. Um, and I don't have any additional comments, other than uh, I hope everybody stays safe and cool, as it's supposed to be pretty disgustingly hot over the next. Couple of weeks, uh, Irene.
I could just have to get you guys to sign the checks.
Yes, absolutely, uh, Jesse.
Um, only thing is, is we're still using the water in the school building. We should at minimum have the U V light replaced.
Are we using the water?
The only thing I use it for is the Wixup, X up weed killer and wash the foot.
Yeah, all right, then you're okay, but I I didn't wanna see you wash your hands, cuz you have a cut or something.
And anything potable, we'll have to get that back in, but if it's just being used for like cleaning the trucks or, you know, mixing up weed killer, then I think we're probably okay.
Scottsburg water will kill you.
Or make you stronger.
That's his radioactive spider, uh, Lisa. Okay, uh, Carl.
Well, that, we need an executive session to discuss the pending litigation and an ongoing investigation.
Okay, uh, so at this point, uh, we're gonna uh. We'll adjourn and then. And then reminder work on Saturday, if you're around eight o'clock in the morning, uh, hopefully the weather holds out, but we're gonna be. Uh, replacing mulch, replacing timbers uh around the playground, under the bleachers, moving a shed and cutting some trees down, so. Uh, if you're so inclined, come on out and give us a hand. Uh, the time is now uh eight twenty-six, motion is rejected.
Irene Roopall Peters.
Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.